Thank you. Roll call.
Mr. Schneider?
Here.
Ms. Mattiger?
Yeah.
Mr. Shi?
Here.
Ms. Peng?
Ms. White?
Here.
Mr. Mohan Patel? Mr. Burrell Patel? Mr. Rivera?
Here.
Five present.
Thank you so much. Opening statement, the New Jersey Open Public Meetings Act was enacted to ensure the right of the public to have advance notice of and to attend the meetings of public bodies at which any business affecting their interests is discussed or acted upon. In accordance with the provisions of this act, the Edison Board of Education has caused notice of this meeting to be published by having the date, time, and place thereof posted on the Board of Education Administration's administrative offices. Copies of these notices were sent to the Home News Tribune and Star Ledger on February 7, 2022. The public may participate at regular meetings in accordance with the bylaws and the applicable state regulations. Thank you, everyone, for coming tonight. This is nice to be back here on the caucus room. Very, very cool to be back here, and I look forward to more meetings here as we get back to normal. So, a little housekeeping. So, why are we here? This is a committee of the whole. This is a little non-traditional for facilities, but that's okay. I'm a big proponent of getting as many board members on board with the discussions. This is a working board meeting. This is a working committee meeting. Our idea here is to have a very productive time. We're looking for about 90 minutes, give or take, leaving about 30 minutes for public comment if needed. Public comment is obviously necessary and encouraged, and our goal is to make sure, depending on how many people come here tonight, one of our goals is always to make sure everyone is heard. However, with this being a committee meeting, we do have an action meeting and a caucus meeting coming up. We will have a 30-minute public meeting, public comment timing on this tonight. So, with that said, you know, we have an agenda that's, you know, facility-oriented, and we hope that we stick tonight to facility topics as we talk about how we can improve what goes on here in Edison School District. It's very exciting, and we hope to be doing this once a month. That's the idea. And I will be, I'm the committee chairperson. I will be reporting out the minutes of this meeting at our next action meeting. There will be no voting tonight on anything. There's nothing on our agenda to be voted, no action to be taken. Again, this is a working committee meeting. So, with that said, we have on our agenda, our first thing is a roofing project presentation and our facility guru from Edison Township. Mr. Colibas is here. So, thank you so much for staying late tonight and providing us with this information, and if you could take it away.
Sure. Thank you. Thank you, members of the Board of Education and the public. Some time ago, when I sat down with Dr. Bragan, he asked me to go over upcoming potential projects for the summer of 21, 22. And I put together tonight a little presentation for both the public and the board. And of course, you're more than welcome to answer, ask questions. I'll ask them the best I can as we go through. So, the first slide you're about to see, and forgive me, this is a little temperamental. There we go. JP Stevens. As you can see at JP Stevens, I've illustrated here the area that is the worst. This is the art wing along the main hallway into the front foyer. And you can see what I did was I went around, I took some pictures, and this is actual inside the school. This is on Friday. We had some rain on Friday, and you could see a missing ceiling tile here with the garbage can collecting water. These are tiles that were just changed recently, but the roof continues to leak. You can see right here where the water is pooling. This is right along, right here in this area is right around over here, and that's, that area reflects right in this area. So, the JP Stevens roof, it's about 1997 when it was done. The area we're looking to do is approximately 20,000 square foot, give or take a little bit. Using the industry standard for built-up roof, because when you do have a wet roof, wet insulation, you really can't put down any other kind of roof. You have to remove the wet roof because it has some, you know, environmental concerns going forward. So, using the industry standard of $30, that's what we paid last year for a built-up roof, that would be about $600,000. Moving along over to Edison High School. Again, I illustrated the area, and there's actually two areas that are the worst of Edison High School. This is right around the gymnasium area where you walk in, right down the main hallway here in the front, along with in the back of the athletic wing where the weight room is and some of the locker rooms are. You won't see as many bad pictures here because this happened to be right after the storm. About two days later, we replaced the tiles. But again, you see stained ceiling tiles, which are indications of a roof leak. Here along the wall, here as well. There's some water in the light, which is never good. Again, this is about 20,000 square foot of space, again, at the same industry standard of $30 square foot. And that's all in, I should say. That's architectural, design fees, bidding, construction management. It was about $600,000. Moving along to Herbert Hoover. This area here where I illustrated is right under the cafeteria. Smaller area, but it's a, it's a separation from the main building to what is the gymnasium in the back building. You can see this is the cafeteria. This is where our children are right under here eating. Again, that area is an indication of right underneath there. I walked it off, pasted off. That area where the roof is definitely worn away, again, probably 1996, 1997 roof, that's the reason that that's happening. You know, the roof is, the roof has seen its age. Again, 5,000 square foot, based upon the industry standard of using the built-up roof, $150,000, give or take. Over here at John Adams Middle School, you'll see the front area, which is just off the gymnasium, just around the cafeteria is right here, along the front offices corridor area. Again, you could see some pictures of what is happening in those hallways, right in the front of the building, right along where the children are going into the cafeteria here. This is the hallway where the cafeteria is. Again, water just building up. Again, this is a 1995, 1996 roof, maybe 97. I got a little slide at the end. It'll tell you the age of each of the roofs. Twelve, about 12,000 square foot. Again, you know, and I want to be clear, so the board understands. I walked them off. I Googled them. It might be a little bit more. It might be 13,000 at the end, or it could be a little less. I just did it from, you know, my pacing off. So, these numbers are based upon the industry standard of $30, but the square footage could change here or there a little bit based upon when we get an architect to walk it and see what the, what the exact area is. Over Woodrow Wilson, this is the second floor, front of the buildings right here. Second floor classroom, all classroom area. When I went to take the pictures inside, and there's always stained ceiling tiles in there, they had just changed them, so that's why I really couldn't give you any, any inside pictures. But this is a good indication of what's happening to the roof here. This is the tar, the membrane. This is a built-up roof where stone goes on top of the tar, which is on top of a built-up slope material, insulated material that has the water draining to the drains. You can see a little bit of a drain here. Again, all of this is washed away, eroded away over time. You know, when it cracks, the water, you know, gets through the membrane of the roof, comes down, and right in all of these classrooms here are always saturated ceiling tiles. This is a larger area, about 25,000 square foot. Again, it's a built-up roof, so it has to be removed, and a built-up roof should go back on top of it, so it's about $750,000. What I did is I tried to wrap it all up. The roofs I looked at, again, like I said, they're all 97, 98 roofs. I gave you the locations of where they're at, the approximate estimated cost. These roofs are, these roofs are in bad shape. They have to be repaired. You know, either we repair them now, or we're going to repair them later, but they have to be repaired. They're, they're at the end of their lives. So, if anybody have any questions on roofing, I'd be more than welcome to entertain questions.
Thank you. So, the pictures that we see, are they active leaks, or are they leaks that have been patched in some way, or like every time it rains, are those leaks coming through the ceiling?
Yes, absolutely, especially at JP Stevens along that hallway. We've made extensive repairs there, I'm told, over the years. You know, we make a repair somewhere, and it moves somewhere else because that roof is so old. So, there, those, what you see there are active.
And how long have those leaks been active at this point? Years or months?
Years, years.
Years?
Years.
Okay. What do we typically budget for roofing projects each year?
Two.
Around $2 million a year? Is that right?
For the past three years, somewhere around $2 million.
In the budget since I've been here, Board President, it's been about $2 million a year. We haven't always spent all that, but it's been a $2 million budget for annual roof replacements.
So, have these projects been on proposals the last few years?
They've been part of the proposals, but what we normally do is triage the top two or three or four, depending on how much it costs, and do some of those each year. If you looked at this list last year, it would have included Thomas Jefferson, Washington, and Frank, Edison High School, which Edison High School was done in October, and I believe Thomas Jefferson Middle School, we budgeted for, and we PO'd them, but they haven't been able to do them yet, right, because the schools are occupied. Is that accurate?
That's accurate. They're both going to get done late June.
So, being, we have 21 buildings that we oversee, and Mr. Colibas and his team does a nice job in trying to find out where the most need is at the time. And I think, I don't want to speak for you, Mr. Colibas, but these are the most needy roofs at this time.
Yeah, that's exactly correct, Dr. Bragan. And as you said, last year, the roofs that we put in the budget last year to do, the three, were the most needed to do, and we're just moving along to our next most neediest ones that need to be done.
I have, I have another question. So, when we have an active leak and we move to, hi, Mr. Patel. When we move to repair the roof, obviously, there's, there could be moisture in the ceilings and some, you know, I don't want to say the mold word without, as an alarm bell, but obviously, we have mold concerns, mildew, et cetera. So, how do we deal with that when we do a roof repair? Do we also look at the interior?
Well, we do. We look above the ceiling, you know. But again, if you're familiar with the drop ceiling, above it is the, is the roof deck.
Right.
Where you would have those concerns is in between the roofing material and the, and the deck.
If there was insulation or, right?
Correct. And that's all encapsulated underneath the roof with the roof deck below, below it, or the roofing material above it. How we fix that is we have a, you know, a time and material contract with a local vendor, a roof repair company. They come out, and we identify where the roof is, where the leak is. I meet them onsite, or the facility manager meets them onsite, shows them, they pace it off, and they make a repair. And then, and we monitor.
Fair enough. Ms. Mattiger?
So, just one question I have right now. When you say 1997, do you mean that the entire roof for all of JP Stevens or for all of these schools, none of those have been updated, or only that part has not been updated?
Only that part. If I was to show you a map of all our schools, it would be section A, B, C, D. These, when I pulled out from those areas, that was the years that they were, they were put down. So, some of those roofs are newer in some areas.
So, some, there are some parts of the roof in those schools which are, have been updated since?
Correct. For example, we just replaced one at Edison High this year, so it would be 2020. Yes, there are different sections of the roof that are newer.
And then, when you spoke about built-up roof, you talked about the other roof having some type of environmental concerns? Like, what are those environmental concerns?
What I was saying is when, exactly what the Board President was saying, is that when you have a built-up roof and the material underneath it, the insulation gets wet, there is an environmental concern over time. Where it's wet, it stays wet. It doesn't always dry out when there's an active leak. That's what I was saying. You can potentially.
Okay. Yeah, no, good to know that, because I think we had approved about two years ago of some foam type of roof, right? Elizabeth, you were there on the board. And we didn't know at that point that this was a problem. So, thank you.
We actually approved some last year. I think it's high-grade insulators. Is that the?
That's correct.
Person applies the spray-down silicone-type rubber roofs. And there's three roofs that were slated for this year. The reason the Edison High School roof was not done as spray-down when they did the core testing, I believe is what it's called. The insulation, which in some places is four inches thick, depending on the slope of the roof, was wet. And if that insulation is wet and remains wet over time, sealing it in doesn't help fix any problems in the long term and compromises the decking on the roof as well. So, as Mr. Colibas said, once that determination was made, we determined that the roof at Edison High School needed to be a built-up roof, and you have to rip off the previous roof. The roofs that are being replaced at Thomas Jefferson Middle School, and I believe it's Washington Elementary School, those sections were not wet to that extent, and they will be using the high-grade spray-down insulation, which we've already contracted for. Is that correct, Ms.?
That is correct. In addition to core drill, and Dr. Bragan's exactly right, sometimes they take infrared scans as well to see the depth of the water. And I believe that that's exactly how we found out that Edison High was, needed to be removed and replaced with a built-up roof.
Are you done? So, the materials that you use to repair these roofs are, one option seems to be spray-down?
Correct. There is a couple different ways to replace the roof.
So, for the $30 per square foot budget, what material are we using?
That would be built-up roof.
Built-up, okay. Mr. Shi?
So, Mr. Colibas, you know I'm going to ask this question.
Sure.
The spray-on versus the built-up roof, correct?
Correct.
The spray-on is about 19 bucks per square foot, and the built-up is 30. Right? So, it's 1/3 cheaper. So, if you look at the budget last year, we had $2 million. And if we had gone with a built-up roof for the two high school, for the two roofs that we talked about, we'll be over the $2 million budget. Okay? So, we end up doing one built-up. The two are the spray-on. I just want to reiterate, the spray-on material doesn't have any issues. It's not, it's not the issue of the material. Let's be very clear. Okay? The environmental things talking about are the one that's existing, that could be mold or stuff like that. So, you know, that could be a concern. But the, what we did last year is we look at the damage of the roof to decide what is a built-up roof and what is the spray-on. The built-up is, you see, that's the black top with sand on top of it. And the spray-on is they put about three inches of foam, then they spray a rubber on top of it. It's much lighter weight. It's a relative newer quote-unquote technology, and it's 1/3 cheaper. So, if you tally this thing up, this is 2.46 million dollars. Okay? I don't think this includes the architect fee.
The $30 was the architect. It did take the architect.
The $30 bill, I thought the architect charged us separately for, to put the specs together.
What I did was I took the price of the Edison High School roof that we did last year with the architect, with the square footage, and came up with the $30.
But when I looked at it, it was a bid. The bid was 30 bucks.
Correct. It was all in, $30 was their whatever percentage.
But did we pay the architect separately?
No, no.
We didn't? Okay, all right. That's good. All right. But the bottom line is, it's a third cheaper. And so, my question is, do we need the built-up roof for all of them? Right? If you go back another year, that was $2 million budgeted as well. That was for the built-up roof, and we went up doing three, I was thinking three schools. I forgot which school. That was a year ago. And we end up only spent 1.4 million dollars, $600,000 saving in there. The same warranty, 20 years. Okay? They come in, they'll fix it. So, I would suggest us to look into the spray-on technology for some of the roof. If the needs to go with a traditional, then go with it. But if we can use the spray-on, use the spray-on. Okay? Let's control this to $2 million, because right now you have 2.46. And the $30 is last year's price, and this year, we know everything goes up. So, you're way probably going to go over 2.5 million dollars on this. And, you know, so I would suggest, let's look into the other alternative before we go all in to the built-up. So, that's just my two cents.
I mean, based on what you're saying, I agree with you. It makes complete sense. The warranty on these roofs, depending on each one, is still 20 years, each one?
Same.
So, if we have the same warranty, we anticipate it to last the same amount of time, and if it's less expensive. But you're saying it depends on what the core samples, right?
Correct.
So, certainly, if given the opportunity, it sounds like the spray-on would be the best alternative.
Yeah, they do the infrared scan, so they will, they will see.
Yeah.
How bad, you know, the word, how bad this, this damage.
I'm, I'm in agreement with you, and I also think that, I mean, it's bad when you see active leaks like that. So, I know that we want to stay close.
Even worse than we did two years ago.
Right. So, even though we want, I mean, I agree that we should stick to our, our budget. It's obvious that we have to, it's not like we have an unlimited pot of money here, but at the same time, we, we don't want waterfalls in the schools. So, when we can save money to hit that budget number, we should, in my opinion. Does anybody else have a?
Yeah, so I just want to add that.
Ms. Mattiger?
Yeah, so before we really make any decision, I would want to see a document, if you could prepare pros and cons for the built-up as well as for the spray-on. I want to know exactly what the environmental concerns are, what happens after 20 years when you need to rip that roof off and, you know, put in a new roof. So, without that information, I would find it hard to decide what's the better. I mean, obviously, you want to save money. So, wherever we can save money, we must save money, but we just have to ensure that there is no environmental concerns and that we're not being penny wise and pound foolish. So, you know, you spend less now, but you end up spending more later. And so, so if you could, if you could prepare a document where it just tells us the strengths and the weaknesses of each, that would help make a better decision.
Absolutely.
Can I ask a question?
Mr. Rivera? Use the microphone, please. Thank you.
What's the life expectancy on sprayed versus built-up? I know we have a 20-year warranty, but.
30 years, probably.
So, it lasts about 30 years?
I'm sorry. They, they said that, because we had this question that we asked before. They said it, they're guaranteed 20 years, but at 30 years, it should not be an issue.
Ms. Colibas, from your memory, and I know.
Well, Dr. Bragan knows roof.
A little bit, just a little bit. You get to be my age, you, Doug. You've done a little bit of everything.
Yeah. Not your expert, though.
And this year is concerned with the roofs, because it came up. We were going to do the three roofs, and we talked about doing the high-grade, right, the spray-down foam. Who determined we couldn't do it? Was that the architect when they went out and take, they took a look, and then we had them do the infrared or do some core testing?
Correct. We paid an architect to come out and do the infrared testing. It's, whatever the cost is, they come out, they do it, they took the cores, and that's when you find out whether you can, whether you have to do the built-up or replace the built-up or do the spray-down.
So, I think when the board makes a decision to go ahead and look at these roofs and get an idea, we should probably do that same course of action, then come back to the board.
I, I know we have two architects of record. Is one of those architects better than the other one at things like roofing projects and the knowledge with this building material?
I can't, I can't make that determination. I, I wouldn't be able to tell you who's better at, at doing that. I just.
Fair enough.
Both of them are, are good.
It's a roof, so I would imagine they just solicit bids and, right?
I'm sure they have, for President, if I may have.
Yes. Use the mic.
I'm sure some of these architects basically do this on a continuous basis where they're putting roofs on their buildings, and I'm sure they would know what they would need to do. But my question is another one. Do we have any preference on what contractor we want to use for these roofs, or are we going to put it out for RFP, or what is exactly going to be the process?
No, it would go out for a bid.
Okay, good. Because I don't know if there's any particular contractor that we want to hire. That's a reasonable.
No, the, the number that we were looking at would definitely require us to go out for a public bid.
And does that public bid go through us, or it goes through the architect?
We would, I would, I assume we're going to.
Our office?
Yeah.
Either way, it depends upon the architect. So, we could do it through us, or the architect may want to do it in conjunction with us. So.
Well, to be clear, the architect, the architect may draft the specifications, but we are the people who put it out to bid. Correct. And we're the ones who contract with the contractor.
That's correct.
Okay.
Quick question in regards to.
Mr. Patel?
In regards to the bid, would the architect know better in terms of what is required, or would we know better what we require in terms of the bid process? Or would you allow that to just go through the architect, because they are knowledgeable of the subject matter? Versus someone like myself, I don't know anything about roofs. All I go is by whoever the roofer is and what they're able to provide.
No, whatever architect we eventually went with, we would meet with and talk about, walk the roofs, look at, do the infrared scan, and do the core, and then come back to the board with, you know, the spray-on roof will work, or we need to do a built-up roof. I mean, there is still a little homework that needs to be, be done here. I just, the direction is, what I think I hear, I hear the board saying is, get that homework done. I just need to know who's doing that homework.
Just on that note, Mr. Colibas and Mr. Patel, I think the key for the architect is the specifications for the roof, and they draw out the specs that will be included in the bid. As Mr. Shi said, I have a little bit of knowledge of roofing from a lifetime ago. But, you know, the materials and things have all changed over time, right? So, you rely on the architect, whether we're doing a spray-down or a built-up, to develop the exact specifications that are included in the bid and make it in language that's manageable for us to understand when they come back in. And it says, as Mr. Colibas said, it's $28 a foot. Okay? We're assuming that bid is kosher and everything meets the parameters set forth by the architect, and another guy comes in at 35, even a guy that's not as good as the numbers as I am could figure out that $28 is cheaper. So, I think that's the key role in the architect, and that we then get that information where we can understand it more easily.
Yeah.
I have a few questions, Doug.
Ms. Mattiger?
So, just, just from the top of your knowledge, if, so, the history of these spray-on roofs, how long have, has this technology been in existence?
To the best of my knowledge, for about 15 or 20 years.
15 or 20 years?
But I, I don't want to be held to, because I don't know. I'm not an expert in spray-down roofs.
Okay. So, would you have any sense of places that got the spray-on roof first, so that, you know, if the company, I mean, if this technology has only.
We have five roofs.
No, no, not us. I'm talking about New Jersey schools in general.
From.
Where, where we can see the history of, you know.
I could find that out for you by own.
Okay. And the third question is, how many, how many companies do we have in the state doing this spray-on?
I'd have to get you that information.
Because the last that I remember, there were like just four in the state from two years ago at that point.
I can get that information. I don't know.
And then, and then who gives the guarantee? It's the company that would give the guarantee?
Correct.
And what if the company is not in business anymore? Is somebody else who takes care of it?
It's the roofing man, it's the manufacturer of the, of the material that guarantees the roof, and then they would, you'd have to own, hold a different company to that, to that guarantee, I'm assuming.
Okay, thank you.
Any other roofing-specific questions? Ms. White?
Doug, we're going to do all five buildings?
Well, I think, I think what.
Once everything is all researched and we just, you know, find out everything we need to.
Well, I think what we need to do is certainly literally drill down on this.
Yeah.
Right? So, some core samples, whatever infrared technology, et cetera. Make sure that we know what we can do with spray-down and what we can do with the built-up.
Okay. Because in the past, we used to do, we'd do so many schools a year, you know, because the roofs, the roofs are always an issue. But I think Will, you know, do all his research and find out everything that we need to know for that, so we make a good decision. So.
Yeah, I think that ultimately, the goal would be to plug up all those leaks, right?
For sure.
So, we got to figure that out, but, and do it in the most financially responsible way, which sounds to me like a hybrid of whatever we can get done.
Yeah. So, he's got a lot of homework to do.
Yeah. And there's a timeline on this, right? We, we got to get moving on it, right?
Yes. We don't want to be, you know, eventually, you get closer to the summer when the work's done. We have to go out for bid. We have to advertise. We have to award. And then there's always the shortage of getting the material to be ahead. So, yeah, we're kind of pressed to start the process.
So, when can the board expect some feedback from you on, you know, moving forward with this?
A good three weeks. We have to.
Okay.
Get a contractor into infrared and find out where we're going. I need to have direction of what architect we want to do that and get them out there and get a PO written to them and infrared the roofs, have them write the report, get it back, so we can review it, and then go from there.
Very good. Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other roofing-specific questions from the committee?
Quick question.
Mr. Patel?
Yes. So, Colibas, how many infrared contractors do we have that go out and do the, you know, specifications?
Whatever architect we would use has those. They have contacts.
Yeah, we used to have a roofing consultant. His job is just do roofing. Last year, we changed it. I'm not going to get into the reasons. So, want to be more, more efficient, have the architect do all of that. Now, right now, we have two architects on record. If you want to change to another one, have USA do it, that's fine as well. But my point is, let's just not commit to the built-up, and let's see the other options, and, you know, then.
I agree.
Yeah.
Yep. Very good. Parking lot projects.
Parking lot projects. Again, after meeting with Dr. Bragan and meeting with principals through the budget process, I've come up with a, a list of some parking lots, and I'm going to go through them one by one, and I'll entertain your questions. And I'll start. First one you see here is John Marshall Parking Lot. It's the front, the front walk, the front entrance, road in the front, and the road that comes around the side. This parking lot here is about 41 or almost. This parking lot here is about 41 or almost 42,000 square foot. The proposal here is to mill and pave the entire area with some base repair. Now, I, I do want to be clear, because I'm sure this is going to come up. We do have a current vendor that we went out for bid, that we awarded contract to, that does all this work. So these numbers are based upon his bid, the bid of that company, based upon the square footage and the, the repair that needs to be done. The repair work, when you see it says repair base as needed, that's about 15% of the work that needs to be done. It may not, you may not use all of it, you may use some of it. If you know anything about parking lots, and I'm, I do, and I'll tell you about it, right here, you would need to repair the base. This is probably, you know, a good 2,500 square foot. When you mill this, you would find that you're already through the, the bottom layer of, of asphalt, and you're into the concrete, or you're into the rock area, so you'd have to repair that, you'd have to dig that out and repair it. Over here, you don't need to do that much base repair. As you get down, you might find a spot or two that you need to do. So to be safe, the industry standard is about 15%. This number of 155,068 dollars constitutes some base repair. It's my estimate and my professional opinion that we will not use all that. But in order to be safe, because I don't want to come back to the board at some point and say, I, I want to do this parking lot for $109,000, but now I'm in the middle of it and I need to give you a change order. I don't, I don't want to operate that way, that's not fair to anybody. So I did solicit from our vendor. He went out, he looked, he walked it, and based upon his expertise, about 42,000 square foot, we would put some I-2 top coat, four inches of it, and then two inches of I-5, and we would re-stripe the existing parking lot with the, the parking lot to the existing layout. That would be about $155,000. We can do this project in a matter of a week or so at the end of June and have it ready to go. Moving on to Ben Franklin, as some board members may know, we did one side of Ben Franklin last year. This would complete Ben Franklin, this would be the, the, the front road going out to the road and the teachers parking lot. Again, you know, this is about 47,000 square foot, a little bit more, and the, and the price is indicative of that because of the base repair. Again, my professional opinion is there's not as much base repair here needed as there is at Marshall, but in order to be safe, we, we should definitely, if we're going to do this project, write the purchase order for, for that amount. As, as you all know, we, we bought some buses this year, we're moving forward buying buses. Speaking with Dr. Bragan, we, we need an area to, to support some of these buses. After going around the district and talking with Dr. Bragan, I think we came up with a suitable area. This is Herbert Hoover, this is Brower Avenue, the VFW is right here, our, our warehouse is right here, and this is our, our ground shop is right here, our warehouse is right here. There's a, a, existing McCannum driveway right here, and it's hard to see, and I apologize, but there's an area right here that we can build. We used to store some material back there over the years, some gravel dirt, we cleaned it out. We could build a 16,000 square foot parking lot right there. I did sketch it out, which would give us 15 spots for buses and 15 par, parking spots for drivers. Now, I'm not a, I'm not the most intelligent guy, and I know that we're buying 30 buses, but I think we could, and Dr. Bragan would agree, we found room for the other 15 in our existing lots, so we could, we can do that. That, that, unlike the other projects, there is no base repair there because we're starting new. That is all 100% ground that has to be dug up and, and, and stone base. So that is $120,000 based upon the bid price of our, of our contractor. Moving on, this is a, this is a project that was brought to the Finance and Facilities Committee meeting last year. This is the JP Stevens parking lot, rather large parking lot, rather extensive damage throughout this parking lot. If you all drove through it, you, you know this parking lot. Last year, the committees decided that we were going to do a, a different parking lot and not move forward, but, you know, keeping it on my list. This is 148,000 square foot. This does include Hawkway, you know, the teachers lot, the student lot, it's a pretty big area. There is extensive base repair that would be needed here, and I'm, I'm not going to say we're going to use it all, but I would, I would venture to say we're going to use a, a vast majority of it. So I wanted to be safe, based upon the square footage price that we have bidded, it would be $498,275. Again, you know, I, I wrapped them up in one slide so everybody could see, and I did put an asterisk there that the cost could be lower, you know, it's predicated on how much base repair is needed. So these are, these, these are parking lots that are in, in some need of repair, some attention, and that would be what I would recommend this year, that, that we do some of them, all of them, but I would give you the opportunity to ask some questions.
Is, thank you, Mr. Colvis. So that's about a million dollars. The budget for paving typically is what? Do we know that, Ms., Dr. Bragan?
400,000 we've used over the last probably two years since I've been here was our annual allocation for paving.
So if you, is there a way to do, I mean, I know this, this is a wish, wish list of sorts, but that fight, like, let's just take JP Stevens, for example, is it 500,000 or nothing? Or is it, is there a way to piece it together, or does it just simply not make sense to do a portion of it?
It, it doesn't make sense from...
Okay.
From our perspective. We could do anything you want, absolutely, but it would not be cost productive to, to do that.
So, I, I mean, excuse my, 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 me being a rookie here. So, Mr. Shi, I'd like to ask you this, since you have the most experience here. What, what about the, what was the discussion like in the past when you decide, you know, to either do or not do a, a project like this? Do you remember?
So, at the end of the day, it's a dollar sign, right?
Right.
So I, I see that JP Stevens come back again on this, but if we remember, the discussion last year is, we put JP Stevens aside because we don't know what's the plan for JP Stevens is. If we are expanding JP Stevens, the whole thing is going to be redone. So I don't know what the plan is. If the plan is that JP Stevens is not going to get redone, so go ahead and fix this. If not, I think when you came in, I asked you for a list of all the parking lots. Give me a five-year plan.
You did.
Right? So you have that, I'm pretty sure you still have it, I still have it. Let's say, it, it depends on how much money we have. If we are sticking with half million, a million dollars, that you do the three projects. If we have additional half million dollars, let's look at what's next on, on the, on the list and how much that is, right? Again, it all depends on what we're going to do with JP Stevens. I know it's, it's, that was the biggest ticket item in there, and you have Edison as well. So that's, that's all part of the discussion.
And, and, and that's why I, I put it down, not because I wanted to rank it in any specific order, but because we did have that discussion at the, at the facilities committee meeting. I, we don't know what the board's going to decide to do with the, with the addition. It doesn't, does it make sense or doesn't make sense? That's your decision to make if we're going to do it without doing the addition.
And, yeah, yeah.
Mr. Colvis, if, if cost was not a factor, you just eliminate the dollar figures, which would be, what would be your rank in terms of most dire?
Before Mr. Colvis speaks, I'm going to weigh in.
Dr. Bragan.
The parking, the parking lot for the 30 buses that are going to be here June 1st is our priority, and I would, I would recommend to the board, we consider doing that out of this year's capital funds, which we do have sufficient funding for, because if we get the 30 buses in June, we need a place to put them. I'm sorry, Ms. Colvis.
That was, that was my answer, because...
I think that's number, so that's number one.
Board President.
Point, I think, is taken by all, so...
Board President, if I could add something real quick?
Yeah, Mr. Patel.
Right, in regards to the meeting that we had last year, in terms of this, that was the reason why we didn't do JP Stevens, because we were looking at expanding JP, and that's the reason why it's still there.
Understood.
But I agree with Dr. Bragan, we definitely need to get that bus depot ready.
So, so Board President...
Yes.
If I may, I mean, and I don't like to do this, and I'm probably going to get myself shot in the foot, but I, I don't think Marshall's going to cost the whole 155, but I do believe Marshall needs to be done. I could see that coming in, in, in the 120 range. After that, I, I don't think JP would come in significantly lower than, than that because of the base repair. I think if we, if you wanted to cut that up a little bit and maybe not do the front, the front driveway coming in, which isn't the worst on Hawkway, but just do the teachers lot and the parking and, and the, and the student lot, we could probably get that down a, a little bit lower to, to the low 400s, I'm, I'm assuming. I have to talk to the, to the contractor, and you could probably get your bus lot, Marshall and Stevens and put Ben Franklin to next year. But again, I, I don't know the numbers where they're coming in for the base repair, so I don't want to be married to that.
Board President, if I could...
Yeah, Mr. Patel.
Yes. So just on that note, in regards to, if we had, if we had all of them together and were able to go out for a bid and we could try to get other competition coming in to figure out some different, you know, numbers, plus we don't do the parking lot for, the portion of the parking lot where we're putting the expansion or where, at least I'm thinking we're putting the expansion for JP Stevens. I would say if we could do two figures and figure out what the difference would be if we did the expansion part and if we didn't do the expansion part, and if we could do the whole project and if we could get the comp, competition out there.
But we've already, we already went out for bid, we already had, we did that there.
They have fixed that one.
We could do whatever you got, whatever the board so chooses, but...
So, let me ask you this, is there a, I, I think this year we can anticipate next year and the year after what's going to be the next on this list, right?
He has a list.
So you have the list?
I have a list, yeah.
I could share with you.
So does it, in, in your list, is this, I assume this would be year two of your long-term parking lot plan?
Correct.
I asked him for five years.
So, okay, so we're in year two of the five-year plan. So we already know that this list looks different next year based on whatever we don't do this year, and then add to it what you already know is coming down the pike. Based on that, what does year three look like? Is it another million dollars or is it less? Or, you know, if we project this out long-term, that helps me decide what to do this year?
Again, we look to do the 400, I think the number was 400,000, so we try to fit $400,000 in. It just happens to be that JP, which is the most expensive, exceeds that number because it's in that much need of a repair.
Right.
Doug, I have a question.
Ms. Madiger.
So just, I just have a suggestion for the transportation bus lot. Is it possible to do solar roofing there? Because then what's going to happen is that during the snow, the buses would not get, you know, you wouldn't have to clean them. It would not take as much time. So is that something we can explore, putting, you know, how you have at the Rutgers where we do the graduation, you have those solar roofs. It's a parking lot with covered solar panels.
We could look at, we can look into that.
Yeah, but the thing is that parking lot is very small, and we're talking about 15 buses, so I'm not sure how much energy it's going to generate, and the costs are putting in, so we can all look into it. But at the end of the day, it's, it's, it's a dollar amount. And the other thing, I, I mentioned this before, is we do this pavings once a year around, you know, the, the summertime. Township does this all year round, right? So as a part of the shared services, can we, you know, decide what we're going to do and tag on with the township's bid to see if we can get anything cheap? I, I don't know what the answer is, but township does more paving than us, for sure. So maybe this is too late for this year. I hope the, the committee can look into, this is the kind of shared services, it doesn't cost them anything. We just tag on to whatever, how much they want a bid, we just tag on to it. This is something to look into. Again, you know, for JP Stevens, I would be really reluctant to do the student lot, because if we do anything to JP, all the work is, is wasted.
Yes.
Okay. You can probably do the, do the, do the Hawkway, the teacher lot is not touched. But I, I don't know if all the heavy machinery, the construction machinery coming in, if we end up doing that, what kind of a damage is going to be for, for these roadways. So again, that's just the, the thoughts I put it on for the board to con, to consider. We do have, his, his list is long, so you have, you pick up the next one. And I, I think that, that one is probably smaller than, than the half million dollar for JP. If I remember JP and Edison, I was one of the bigger ones.
Correct.
Yeah.
Mr. President, I have a question.
Mr. Patel.
Mr. Colvis, so all these numbers that you're having here, is it an estimate based on what last contractor gave us, or is it something from an RFP?
No, we went out for a bid last year. We have a paving contractor, Mason, that you all approved, a public bid. So those numbers are based upon the public bid, square foot wise.
So in that bid, did we list all these parking lots, like JP, John Marshall, and all of them? Or the bid was them to go out and estimate, collect estimates first?
The bid was for square footage for paving, for base repair for paving, for masonry, for sidewalk, for concrete. We went out for one bid, not for a project bid. We went out for a large bid or one bid for all of that.
For, for square footage, right?
Correct.
And this particular company came in lowest for their square footage?
Correct.
Okay. So I can assume that if it's, if we go for bid just for JP parking lot, if everything stays as is, then the square footage price may be higher with some other company?
I, I don't, I don't know the answer to that question.
Okay. If, what is, what is your opinion on if we rebid this inflation?
I, I don't have an opinion on, on whether we rebid it or not. I know we, I, I was asked to provide estimates for projects, not whether that, that cost was...
So, would, excuse me, Mr. Patel, the active bid that we have, that we awarded last year, would that prevent us from working with the township with a shared service agreement? Or could we still work with them?
Absolutely.
That's good to know. Okay.
Just some history on the bid, and it was recently awarded, it was only a few months ago.
It was last month.
There were issues with that bid, because previous bidders would just give us a bid for the gross materials used, the bitumen and the other materials that they use by the ton, and then they would add other additional costs not included in the bid that sometimes made it much more expensive, including man-hours and labor and curbing and things you said as extra milling, I forget the exact vernacular there. But we worked hard with our, the attorney to get the bid into such a way that we gave an estimate, if it's going to be this type of materials, over the course of the year, we estimate this much, times it by 10, I think it was, to give what would be the actual number, because there was 15 different prices according to the materials and the labor and all that. So we really got an extensive bid on this, Mr. Patel. I think it's a good bid from this company. It gave us a way to evaluate each one of those on which was the cheapest overall. So we could always go out, though, like anybody said, but this bid was really well researched and when we put it out and, and done in a comprehensive manner. Again, I think as you said, Mr. Mo and Patel in the beginning with the roofing, the key is getting the bids in, in such a way that they're digestible for us when we get it, to clearly define who is the lowest bidder. Some things like this are really complicated. You think paving is, ah, what, how hard could it be? They throw the stuff down and run it over. But there's a lot of subsets of things there that increase the cost, and that was one of the things that we recognized when we delved deeper into the first bid that came out six months ago. out six months ago. We couldn't decipher which was the lowest because there were so many details. Sorry about that.
Very good. Mr. Patel.
Yeah, and if anything, we already have the square footage and the price they're charging us, so if there's any cases where we have to cut off some of the paving percentage on the square footage, we could always calculate the amount and just get an estimate in our head.
Thank you. Ms. White.
Douglas.
Yes.
All right. I see all this up here, and it seems like the only question that we have anything really on is on J.P. Stevens. But we definitely have to do the transportation thing for the buses. I mean, there's no question about that.
Right.
And it seems like John Marshall is in dire straits. Now, do we have to hold everything up until we find out exactly what's going to happen with J.P. Stevens or if we decide to get, I can't see why we would get another bid or put another bid out if we just did that. So why would we hold back on three buildings just because of one building, you know, and not do anything? I think we should do something if we're going to, you know.
I agree.
Oh, good. Okay.
Mr. President, so if we stay.
I'm sorry. Ms. White, anything else?
No, that's it.
Mr. Averon.
So if the budget is at $400,000, I don't see why not we go over those three projects.
I think the three projects come to 444,000, but again, I'm telling you.
You could chip some away, right?
I would.
I'll be on site. I'll watch what's going on. I'll make sure we're using the proper amount of base where we have to and only charge for that.
Twist the arm a little bit.
If I may weigh in on that, if the board permits, I would recommend doing the transportation lot out of this year's budget. We do have money and capital that has not been expended that would cover that, and this way we don't have to wait, and I think that needs to be done sooner than later. So that would lower next year's budget costs by 120,000.
It's a good point.
It's actually a smart point.
Any comments?
I want to say something.
I agree with that.
I didn't hear you.
What was I trying to say? Ah, never mind.
Very good.
Thank you, everybody.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Colivas.
Very informative.
Okay, next, next we're going to be talking about the J.P. Stevens High School turf baseball field. Dr. Bragan.
I'm sure everybody remembers that was a point of concern by some of our parents from the J.P. Stevens baseball team, and the board gave us the charts to go ahead and take a look at that. And I know numerous Finance and Facility Committee meetings last year, we looked at setting all that up. We have yet to receive the final approval from the DEP, so I had a conversation with our architect on that, representatives from DMR. Obviously, it's for all intents and purposes, it's March 1 today. Season starts in about eight days, so that's not going to happen this year. So, you know, it's bad news for some of our parents. We were hoping we could kind of pull that together, but because it's potential wetlands up there, it was a lot more involved than it was on the project on the other side of town. So that project would have to wait until the summer because I don't think we could do any renovations while the kids are playing during the season. So I think we table that until, you know, we get more information. We still have to get the approval. When we get the approval, we could bring it back to this committee, Mr. Board President, and assess when we want to do that.
Thank you, Dr. Bragan.
Can I ask a question?
Yes, Ms. Matiger.
So, Dr. Bragan, how long do approvals take usually, typically?
I had just came on when the last field that I'm aware of was done, and I think it was already, approvals were already done in December of 19 when I got on, but that construction was going on in January and February. Then when COVID hit, they even went through that. And I think the field was ultimately completed in, I don't know, June of 2020, the one at Edison High School. So I don't know, I don't have a point of reference on that. I know the problem with this one was the wetland situation, which as anyone knows that J.P. Stevens High School was all around it, and a little bit of that field towards the outfield, if I'm looking at it on the left-field side, was the area of particular concern, and that took a long time. I was actually in on a few of those meetings with the state representatives. We still don't have the final approval yet, though.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Patel.
Yes. Do we have any connections in the state where we can actually go and push our buttons a little bit to move this forward a little bit? I'm sure we all are connected somehow, some way. We could talk to them to move it forward.
Sure.
Our kids don't suffer.
Mr. Shi. If I recall, the timeline when we first submitted, they were talking about April-March timeframe. So I hope that, you know, we can get that approval this coming month. And I do recall Mr. Pembiani and some other parents came over and spoke to us, and even at the meeting or after the meeting, they talked about the season. So, but we said to them is, you know, let's get the approval done first, and then we can work out when we're actually going to do it. You know, so if we're going to do it, they're going to lose the season. So we have to communicate with them that if it's approved, it's coming because they want it. And we just say, you have to just wait a little bit because we don't want you to lose the season out of this. So, but it doesn't, nothing prevents us to push the project forward, to get the bids and stuff, instead of just, you know, build it right away. Let's wait till the season's over and go ahead and then actually get it worked on.
Okay, very good.
Can I say something?
Mr. Averon.
The other thing, too, if you want to push it forward, like I know when Perthamway got their, did their baseball field over, they used Warren Park. So maybe if we want to push it forward so our kids do get what they need, you know, maybe we could use public parks for the season while they're working on it. If it's in dire need and they want to get it done. I know we did, other school districts have done it because we've done it. So just an idea to throw it out there if you really want to get that project started and use funding from this year.
Fair enough.
Yeah, I think we can talk to the parent, the parent association and the coach to find out what is the best time to do it. But the thing, the first thing, we've got to get approval first. And I hope it's coming up, but, you know, soon. But the original time, I think if I recall, is February to March.
On our, on our other projects we've done historically, is the DEP, are they, do they stick to their timelines if they say April? Is it April or is it typically delayed?
You're talking about COVID time.
Well, I'm asking the question. I think I know the answer, but I'm asking it.
Yeah. So most times they're decent, but it's never on time. You know that.
Okay.
Yeah.
So we're not counting, we're not going to hold our breath for April.
I wouldn't.
I hope they're watching and that we challenge them. Good.
Well, I think one of the concerns there, too, is, and I do remember that meeting where Mr. Papiani and Mr. Casey talked about their children. I think Mr. Papiani's son's a senior this year, and he does have an underclassman, too. So unfortunately, the senior won't get that option. But the problem, if you compare the two high schools, one, Edison High School was being done during COVID when we were remote for a good portion of it, but there's access to that field right from Boulevard to Eagles. There's no access at JP. So even though you disrupt the baseball team, you're going to disrupt every other team because they have to go there. You go through those people's yards?
Yeah. No, that's not.
The German shepherd tries to bite me on this side of the fence.
No, 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 no. There is a section of that. It's a woods. It's not, it's not people's property. It's a lamar.
They're going to let us take those wetlands now?
They use throw the campaign signs over there. The kids walk over that, you know.
I just think it might be more of a, more difficult because as an active construction site there, it's more limited access, possibly, but we could look into all that.
Lamar Avenue. Don't tell the residents I said it.
Very good. Any other questions on turf baseball field?
Yeah, but, you know, we got to let them know that, you know, this is our decision. And I also know Coach Mazzano probably, I think he has a son. He's graduating, a senior. And when I was, you know, at the field, athletic director, what's her name? Kathy?
McCain.
Kathy McCain, and said, oh, is it possible that Coach Mazzano's son can play? I said, well, if it's approving time. So we probably have to disappoint them a little bit if the approval get, keep being delayed.
Very good. All right. Moving along, our last topic here is our internal board survey discussion. So what I did for everyone to understand, I sent out a survey just to this board here. And we got, we got five responses, and the, I'm going to read the questions and I'll give you the results. The reason I did this was just to basically collect some data before this meeting and to kind of shape our discussion and our agenda moving forward. There's, you know, this is not, we're not reinventing the wheel. This facilities committee has existed for a long time. So we want to use what has happened in the past and kind of blend it into what we need to do moving forward. And this survey is just one tool, one of many tools we'll use, to see where the board stands and hopefully move the discussion further. So the very first question, I'm going to do it a little out of order from your packet just because I asked the questions in a particular order here on the survey. So the first question was, this survey assumes the board agrees the schools in Edison Township are quote-unquote overcrowded. The term overcrowding can mean a lot of different things. In your personal opinion, what is the most problematic result of our school overcrowding? While the answer might be all of the above, please choose the most, the most problematic in your opinion. So the choices were lack of space in hallways, cafeterias, and common areas, shortage of classroom space leading to lack of AP offerings and honors courses, higher number of students within each classroom, and the last one was traffic leading into the school parking lots and in the neighborhoods. Obviously, all four of those things are a result of overcrowded schools. However, the respondents were pretty split. Forty percent of the respondents said higher number of students in each classroom. Forty percent said shortage of classroom space leading to lack of AP offerings and honors courses. And 20%, that's one person, said lack of space in the hallways, cafeterias, and common areas. So common areas being gymnasiums, cafeterias, hallways, lobbies, et cetera. The second question was, I'm going to go through them all and then we're going to talk about it. The second question was, are all of the school buildings in Edison Township overcrowded? And four out of the five people said, no, they're not all overcrowded. One person said yes. Should the Edison School District explore the potential purchase of new land to build a new school, or should the physical footprint of our current schools be expanded on a school-by-school basis? And again, that was split. A few people said, yes, buy land and build a new structure. Some said, not sure, we should really examine this further and talk about this as a committee. And then one person said, no, expand our existing school properties to solve the overcrowding. That would be a piecemeal-type thing. I then asked, please prioritize the five schools in need of the most short-term facility improvements. This question refers to a facility improvement with a duration of approximately less than one year from start to finish. Please only select five. So that forces the board, there's, what, 19 choices here? So out of 19 choices, it forces the respondents to only select five, which is tough. And then I mentioned here in the next question, you'll be able to address long-term needs. And for short-term needs, facility improvements, projects less than one year, I would, by far, everyone, everyone's mentioned John Marshall, which is very interesting. Benjamin Franklin and J.P. Stevens were tied for second place, and there was many schools, it was spread out, including Edison High School, TJ, JMI, Lindenall, MLK, Washington, and Woodbrook all came in in the next place. So there were, you know, the thing that I'm taking away from this, but we'll talk about it at the end, is that certainly there seems to be consensus in some ways. The next one was, please prioritize the five schools in need of the most long-term facility improvements. This is what we really would have to dig into and really lean on your long-term plans, whether that's paving projects, but also building and infrastructure improvements. And there was a lot of consensus here. It is, it is clear that the respondents, the five respondents did say Edison High School and J.P. Stevens and Thomas Jefferson are three buildings that, with unanimous respondent consensus saying that they need the most long-term care, with John Adams Middle School and Herbert Hoover Middle School coming in right behind them. And the last, the last thing I did was I asked just for additional comments, if anybody had anything to add. So I'll read three additional comments that were provided. In terms of the most important overcrowding issue, I believe all are important, but I had to choose one, so I did. Parking and traffic circulation is not addressed in the survey. We need to figure out through our facilities discussion if there's any way to improve that as well. The next comment said, important to consider common space expansion. For example, Woodrow Wilson has a beautiful gym, but while beautiful, it is not big enough. All middle schools could use a new gymnasium and an expanded cafeteria space. Is there an opportunity to work with Machio's, our food service provider, on cafeteria outfitting if we build the actual structure? Both high schools need classroom space. Is modular a good answer? And the last comment was a list of ideas. Stelton School Project, commercial property reclamation, which is a new idea, developing existing property, which is the Our Savior's Church that we just bought. And this person would like to provide a status of the Talmadge Road property negotiations. So I go through that, and I'm going to comment on what I see, and then I'll put it to the floor if anyone has comments. But what I see here is a clear need for a few of the buildings truly need attention. It seems like there's consensus amongst the respondents that J.P. Stevens needs both short and long-term attention. I think we're talking today about some, some short-term needs that are certainly glaring, but can those short-term needs be blended with a long-term project that we don't overspend now and wind up, you know, demolishing what we pave? So we kind of have to walk and chew gum at the same time as we develop our long and short-term plans. I know this board has done a good job of, we have a capital reserve. And when we look at that capital reserve, how much should be used on some of these short-term projects? How much should be used as a potential down payment for some long-term projects? There's, it seems to be an initiative here that J.P. Stevens, I mean, we saw the presentation in December, but we also, you know, have a unanimous decision here that certainly J.P. Stevens is a long and short-term goal of ours to take care of. But it seems like also unanimously Edison High and TJ are both in equal need based on this survey. Now, this survey is not a vote. It's not anything that we're going to, I'm going to hold anybody to. It's just a jumping point for discussion and conversation. So, you know, as we look at this, I want to just throw it to the floor now and see if anybody has any initial reaction or thoughts on any short or long-term. Mr. Shi.
Okay. Thank you, Board President. So I just have a question for our attorney. This is sent out to all the board members as an anonymous survey, entire board, and the survey response is anonymous. So I just want to check, is there a possibility of sunshine or violation on this? Because we are not supposed to talk as a quorum about school issues offline, and if it's a quorum, it has to be in public.
So, everything I know about how this survey was prepared is what I've heard here tonight. As I understand the Open Public Meetings Act, when it talks about discussion, whether it's in person, whether it's online, whether it's by text message, whether it's in social media, what they're talking about is a real-time, interactive back-and-forth discussion. So that, for example, if the superintendent were to send out a blast email to all the board members with a particular piece of information and to ask them to respond back to him individually with any questions, that would not be an interactive discussion in which five board members were participating. As I understand it, some questions were put out. Individual board members responded back to one person. There was no interactive discussion among a majority of board members. So unless there's something I'm missing here, I would not consider that to be an illegal meeting under the Open Public Meetings Act.
Okay. So the other question for Board President, I think the, when we set up this facility meeting and during the whole campaign, and for your team, is openness and transparency, right? So why can we talk about this today, about people's position on this? Why are we sending this as an anonymous survey? Because I like to see what my colleagues are saying. Maybe they can swing my perspectives, and maybe, you know, I can talk about my points, I can swing their perspectives. So I don't know, what is the nature of this has to be anonymous? Because we need to be open to the public that, you know, we are elected for, where we stand on these positions. So I just, you know.
Mr. Shi, as this committee, excuse me, as this committee chair, I'm the chairman. So this is how I chose to do it. It sounds like we disagree on my method. I did consult the attorney when Mr. Rubin was on vacation. I made sure that this was something that was okay. It wasn't lost on me that this is a non-traditional way to do business. When I say do business, I mean, conduct our business, which should be a healthy, efficient way to have a discussion. I perceive this as a really good tool to communicate in between our meetings. I strive to have an open communication where we can then take this and not talk about the method of, and the, what I'm doing from a mechanic standpoint and talk about the issues.
Okay.
So why is it anonymous? Because I thought that maybe some people would feel like if I knew who was saying what, that they would feel a little bit more uncomfortable. So there's a simple toggle switch that says, would you like this to be anonymous? And I toggled it, yeah, anonymous. If you think that you'd like me to publish who did it, we could get everybody on the record to do that.
I would.
Or everybody's welcome to share their opinion in this meeting. This is a matter of efficiency, and I feel really good about this.
I would love to. I would love to see everyone's opinion because I said I like to see where each one stands. And so maybe they can swing my perspective.
Board President.
Sorry.
Mr. Patel, Mr. Shi has a floor.
Maybe I can, you know, they can swing mine, or maybe I can swing theirs. So when I'm looking at these, you know, the priorities on this, and I agree with some of them, but we had the, what you called, demographic study. The demographic study did not put TJ as the number-one priority. The data did not, based on the data, TJ is not the priority. Okay? It's the other schools. It's the John Adams, it's the.
Are you, excuse me, are you talking about over, you mean amount of people? Or are you talking about the facility falling apart?
I'm talking about overcrowding. We need to fix the overcrow. I thought there's, everyone who ran for BOE, their number-one platform is fixing the overcrowding, right? So I'm just going by the data. The data has not put some of these schools at the priority. So I don't know how people decide. So I don't know how people decide on this. Maybe, you know, you, you visited a school and stuff like that. But should we go back to the data? Should we continue, you know, there were questions about the demographic study, and we talked about have a demographer last year, and the, the price was too high, that these, these guys are out of, out of state. So should we go by data-driven instead of people's perspective and say, hey, you know what? Yeah, I, I think this school is overcrowding, that school is overcrowding. Let's drive by the data. As I said, a lot of times, data does, data does not lie. So that's, that's my point. So I don't know how valid these things are. It, it's people's perspective of board members, I respect that. But I think when we make decisions, just like what we're doing with, with the roof and, and the, the parking lot, let's have data-driven. Data-driven. That, that's all my, that's all my comment is.
I just want to, just so you know, my perspective on this question was about facility improvement.
Yes.
Which I guess it's up to interpretation. It sounds to me like you interpret that to be overcrowding.
That's one of your questions. The first question on the top is, you know, over, you know, what is considered overcrowding?
Correct.
The space in the hallway, the short, the shortage of classroom A.P. classes and high number of students within each classroom? When I look at these surveys, shortage of classrooms and high number of students with ea, within each classroom, these are totally connected, right? And the only thing that's a little bit remote is traffic leading into a school parking lot in the neighborhood. Yeah. But this is this, but lack of space in the hallway, they're all one thing about overcrowding. This, this is, this is a second question.
Sure. Okay, so.
So this is, you're not talking about roofs, you're not talking about, you know, the parking lot here.
Okay. So again, my interpretation of that question.
Yeah.
Is different than yours.
Okay.
And that's okay.
Okay.
Because this isn't something that's, this is just to, to have a conversation.
Sure, sure.
Okay? So we have to be comfortable to talk and not talk about how the questions were. We have to actually figure out, so it sounds to me like you don't, that you have knowledge that Thomas Jefferson's not overcrowded.
According to the, the data, by the demographic study, that's not. Compared to, compared to the other schools, it's not.
Board President, before Ms. Matiger talks, I would like to say something.
Mr. Patel.
Thank you. In regards to this survey and the anonymity of this survey, actually it did, disservice to the residents that voted for us. They want to know where we stand on all these issues. For us to hide around, okay, there's five people that voted on what they think is the overcrowding, what they think the schools are, open public, that's what they, this, that's what they voted us on for.
No, Mr. Patel, respectfully, Mr. Patel, respectfully.
He has a floor. He has a floor.
I have a floor now, let me just finish.
And I'm, and I'm able to take the floor back.
Before you do, I would like to know, why are we having this as an anonymity, and what are we trying to protect?
So, so Mr. Patel, we're supposed to talk in between meetings. You said open public meeting. We're supposed to actually talk and do work between meetings? So again, I mentioned this the last time. If you have a problem with the, the way things are going, my phone is on, I'm happy to pick up, pick it up for you. I text you, I could call you, you could call me, you could text me, and I'm happy to talk about that. If we wait until we're in this open public meeting, I have to tell you, there's a reason that these buildings haven't been done. There's a reason that the roads haven't been paved. So, well, this, this is the first time, so I had two choices. Excuse me. Excuse me.
I feel it's political than anything else, to be honest with you.
Mr. Patel, Mr. Patel, I'm going to agree to disagree with you? And I just, your point is taken, I disagree. I hope that we can move on and have a productive committee meeting. Ms. Matiger.
Yeah, so just a couple of things. So when this survey was sent out, when Doug sent the survey, it's, it's kind of identifying what we see as issues, right? So Mr. Calivas came today and he identified, okay, we have this parking lot issue, we have this roof issue, and then we all sit down together as a committee and we decide what is, you know, what we need to do. So there were five options, we picked up five options. So I did pick up T.J., and I'll give you a reason why I picked, I picked T.J. And it doesn't mean that we're going to be spending forty million on T.J. It doesn't even mean we're going to be spending four million on T.J. Maybe it's, the work will be done in one million. But the problem is a problem. When I went to T.J., I saw, and I went with Dr. Bregan, I realized for the first time that T.J. does not have a lobby. There was a security guard sitting on a chair with a laptop in a dingy hallway, and there was no space there. Is that what kids see when they come in in the morning? Does that motivate them to work harder? You, in the front of the building, there is this garden, which is completely in ruins, okay? Dead plants, everything dead. This is what you see when you come in the morning? It doesn't mean that you're spending a whole lot of money, and it was an educated decision. Similarly, I had J.P. Of course I will have J.P. Everybody here had, on, on that survey had J.P. And you know very well the issues with the demographic study. When I came on the board, I was the first one to say that this demographic study has not looked into migration patterns. Lot of people come into this school district when their kids are, you know, school-going age. And we have data through the census available, which tells us how many people are coming in from abroad, how many people coming in from the different state, how many coming from a different county. I spent one hour on the phone with a demographer, trying to understand what he did, and then I kind of communicated with the board. So the thing is that, as Doug said, this is a starting point for discussion. And we've, so we looked at all this, this is kind of the entire kitchen sink. And now we need to sit down and talk productively and not, you know, and just be, all of us in a very productive way, in a very positive way. Let's figure out what needs to be done and how we can do it, because until all of nine of us, or actually all eight of us right now, unless we think in a positive way, how do we make change happen? We need to be thinking about the students. We should not be fighting here. We should be, you know, making decisions for our kids so that we can quickly, you know, do whatever needs to be done. It's been a long time, we've been talking about overcrowding, overcrowding, overcrowding. And, but we are not doing anything about it. And we, excuse me, Mr. Patel, it's my floor right now.
That's fine, it's your floor.
Don't, don't, please don't.
Yes, it's your floor.
He's, it's okay, go ahead.
Anyway, that's okay, now you can.
Right. If I could add something to that, please?
Excuse me, Mr. Patel. Ms. White, please.
I promise.
No, you don't have to be quick. You don't have to be quick.
I chose T.J. too. T.J. needs a facelift. I mean, if you've been there, you know it needs, it needs to be, it needs a little TLC. And that's why I picked it. I also picked J.P. Stevens. And I think the parking lot, I mean, if we're not going to do anything with it, that great big hole that he took a picture of.
The big hole had to be fixed.
Somebody has to fix that, because you're going to lose your car in there. I mean, there are just some things that we just can't put on the back burner. T.J. needs a little help, because, you know, it's, I think it's one of our older schools. It was the first middle school, right? Edison High, then T.J. I mean, it's been there many moons. It needs a little bit of help.
Right.
And that's why I chose that. But I also chose J.P. and I, and Edison High as well.
Awesome.
And I just want to make it clear, I know that you're saying you chose those, but I'm sure that you could find something to do at all the schools, as I could.
Oh, I did.
Yes. So this was, all it, what, all this is, is a, is, is a, is a, is a efficient way to stimulate conversation and nothing more.
Correct.
And I just want you to, and I hope that you understand where I'm coming from.
If I, if I could add something.
Yes, Mr. Patel.
Right? Four years ago, when we were actually discussing all these schools getting the, the need that they wanted, it was called a Jerry's referendum at that time, two years ago. And it was used as a political ploy to win an election at that time. So why, why all of a sudden now it's your, there's an issue, right? It is an issue, it has been an issue for a long time. And J.P. Stevens has been pushed in the back burner for all this time. Not to say that all the other schools don't need anything else, they do. But that was pushed in the back burner before, and there was Jerry's referendum, Jerry's referendum. Now what are we going to do? Are we going to put Doug's referendum and say, okay, that was good?
Respectfully, Mr. Patel, I have, I was not there.
I get it, not you.
So I understand the history and I respect the history. However, for us to work together, which I hope we can, I'm trying hard, okay?
Same here.
No, no, well, if, if you don't mind, you could call me, talk to me. In between meetings, we could, we could have a coffee, we could talk. We have the same goals. It's obvious that we want what's best for the kids. And whatever has happened in the past, I respect it, but it's not on me.
Getting to a new school is not going to help the past, and getting to a new school is not going to change the schools what they need.
What does that mean, getting to a new school?
Basically, the, the push is for a new school, right? That's what we're actually, some of the board members here that really want to go for a new school.
There's.
Or the township, or the county, or somebody in the.
I just read.
In the realm that want to do.
Mr. Patel, Mr. Patel. I just read to you that out of five people, two out of five, two out of five said yes, buy land and build a new structure.
Forty, right? Forty percent?
Well, there's only five people, because three people didn't respond. Forty percent is two people.
Right.
So, so your assertion that there's a, a push to build a new school somewhere is not backed up by this. Now, again, this isn't official, but I was, but please understand that this is, again, this is anonymous, so people are telling you what they really think. Maybe, I don't know. Mr. Patel, do you have something?
Yes. Okay. So when I looked at the survey, I found some very interesting, even though it's simple, but very interesting points in there, right? It, it reminds us of what, what we are supposed to do, how we are supposed to perceive. It's a very good survey. It's nothing but very good innovation, a very nice innovative idea, right? You brought up a very good innovative idea of doing a survey, so we have something to talk about today, right? If I were you, and I did not, I would not have idea about this survey, what I would have done over here is, oh, you know, let's discuss, and it would have been boring, it would not have been productive, whereas what you brought up, it brought this, it brings us to talk.
Well, certainly, I don't know if survey's the best way to do the next meeting, based on the last thirty minutes.
But anonymity is not.
Mr. Moyn, Patel, I have the floor. I'm speaking, it's my time. Okay? So it's a, it's a very good way of getting us started, the discussion, right? Now, the advantage of this is John Marshall School, I'll give you an example. And we should, we should worry about all the schools, right? Now, when I toured John Marshall School with Dr. Bregan last year, we saw a lot of issues. Survey like this, when I saw it yesterday, it reminds us of how much work we need to do. It reminded me of some points I had noted down earlier, so I sent an email to you, Dr. Bregan, Mr. Calivas, where that, you know what? I have generated a lot of questions now, just because of the survey, right? So that, that's helpful right there. Things like traffic, they are there. It, while someone would not have chosen traffic, many did not choose the traffic in this, but at the same time, it reminds us of those areas where we need to improve upon. So if we look at the footprint, if we try to work on the future expansion projects and things like that, we also should consider that area, right? So it, it, it's a comprehensive inclusion of several different areas that we need to focus upon and we need to start discussing this as this committee, because it's not only just, we build a different high school and we are done with. No, there are so many schools, we have nineteen schools over here. All of them, or some of them, or many of them needs improvement. So this gets all of us started discussing here, what are all the areas of improvement, and this is a great start for that reason. So we can start discussing here and, you know, we'll, we'll prioritize and we'll do the right thing for the district.
Thank you, Mr. Patel. Mr. Rivera.
Yeah, I finally got my voice in. This is actually really frustrating, sitting here and being, participating in this meeting, because every time I feel like we're trying to move a step forward, we keep going back. So whatever happened last year, two years ago, three years ago, four years ago, needs to be forgotten, and we need to move forward. I know there were things I said over there that people did not like up here. I understand that. But you know what? Now that I'm here and I'm listening to you, I'm listening to you, you know, some of my eyes and ear, my thought process is changing. So one of the, one of the thought processes that changed with me was, I looked at this, first of all, five people responded, I really wish all eight did. That, that bothered me a little bit, because every time we try to do something as a board, it doesn't get done right. Last week, we get yelled at about the form. This week, this week, it's about the, the, the survey. You know, at some point, I feel like we get more work done when we are private. Now we're in public and it's nothing but a fight. So I'm really upset with that, so I had to get that out first. Mr. Shi, when I looked at this stuff, one of the things I did look back, I looked at the census that's posted on, but I also went back and I looked at the referendum. And I looked at what school, what priority, what were the priorities then.
Yes.
But one thing I did was, when we did our walkthrough, I'm telling, I've never been in any of these buildings except for J.P., Edison, Washington, and T.J. Why? Because I went to Washington, looks exactly the same way. I went to T.J., it looks exactly the same way. I went to Edison High, it looks exactly the same way.
Just several hundred more students.
So now, I do, I do a walkthrough and I, and there was concerns throughout the entire district that some of these facilities need to be updated. So my thought process did change because of that. And I, I think at some point, as a board, you know, we need to sit down, it, the most difficult part about this is that we can't sit down together and talk with the sunshine law or all these other meetings. So it's hard to formulate your thoughts, but when we come up with a document, or someone tries or attempts to do something, we can't just pick it apart every two seconds, or we're never going to get anything done. So that's my only concern. So I, I really wish that, you know, everyone would have worked on this survey. I, I hope maybe during a caucus meeting, we could sit down and look at this stuff, but I, I haven't, the thirty minutes that we've been discussing this, it hasn't even been productive.
But Mr. Rivera, just to be clear, we could all agree that maybe a survey's not the best tool. And that's fine, too.
I don't know what's going on, man, but this is difficult. How are we going to do anything?
We got to just move the ball forward. We need to, we need, we need to get some things built, okay? We need to fix things that are broken.
Yes.
I did a building facility tour, and I was appalled that things haven't been fixed. I was appalled that the kids are, are smushed into common spaces. I go into a classroom, yeah, some classrooms have sixteen kids, some classes have thirty-two kids or high twenties or whatever it is. Whatever has happened before I got here, I don't know, but it hasn't moved the ball forward. Everybody's tried and I respect the effort. I respect the effort. The politics and the comments about it, it's irrelevant to me. All I care about is moving the ball forward, and if we could do that together, I need you. I can't do it alone. If your goal is J.P. Stevens, it's clear, you have five people that responded that agree with you, that five, that J.P. Stevens is on the list, priority.
It should be.
Came in first. Well, we all agree.
Good.
So now the question is, what does that mean? So now, what I'd like to do, again, because we're going to have this committee meeting every month, but if we only talk as a board, all of us, once a month, nothing's ever going to happen. What I'd like to see happen is that we workshop this as best we can individually. We obviously can't meet as, with, with large groups, we're going to do whatever's within the parameters of our policies and procedures and laws, but let's come up with a way that we could actually move the ball forward. I don't think it's too much to ask. Now, that means a blend of what you guys have worked on. There's a serious effort, not only what the, what, the public doesn't see everything. What, what, what they should know is how much effort was put in with the financing part of what you guys put together last year. There's a, there's a lot of knowledge that was worked on with the finance of facilities last year that we could build on. We don't throw everything in the garbage and start from scratch, we build on it. But if we don't talk in between, it's going to be impossible to do that.
If I, if I could add.
Mr. Patel.
What we did was, last year, we talked to the architect to go to each school, figure out what exactly the issues are with the principal and Bill, Calivas, right? And to come up with the list of all the schools and what they need and what the biggest priorities are. So I don't know if that has been completed or not, and we can actually work on that, too, in regards to facilities, maintenance, and so forth.
So is, is that report, is that report completed?
I don't believe so. Mr. Kalibas, do you have any recollection? Come to the mic so we can hear.
I have not seen that report. I don't believe it's completed.
You did go around, though, with the architect and looked at certain areas of concern.
I, I did, yes.
I remember that.
You know, another point, just to, to make, one of the, one of the hopes I had with the survey was to see what we thought, and then compare it to stuff like what you're talking about. So we're volunteers, we only see what we see, right? Some of us have been around longer than others, so you have more knowledge, but-
Probably not a good idea.
No, but, right, so sometimes the knowledge is, is not the best thing to have.
Okay, thank you.
Right? But my point is, is that you take the knowledge that we have, which at times could be limited, especially from a holistic view of the nineteen schools. And then you compare it to, let's just say, an architect's report or the building principal's needs. I could tell a building principal, this is what you need, but the building principal knows what they need, not me. So when we sit down and we talk and we say, this is what we think these buildings need, and we compare it to what the actual need is, then we'll see if there's a gap there of knowledge, that means we have to actually talk about building that bridge. And in, in fact, they might have to come in and educate us as a committee, like, hey, you guys think you know what you're talking about, but you don't know what you're talking about, this is what we need. So that's where I think, you know, again, if the, it, it seems as though, based on the research I did and what Mr. Rubin said, this is okay. I'm willing to tailor this a little bit better, maybe we could work together and create a survey. We could discuss if it's something that you would like to remain anonymous or not. We could decide to answer these questions in public if you want. I don't care how we do it. And I, I'm happy to be on the record. I'm, everybody could know my opinion, I don't care.
That's all, my concern is, don't, I don't, the survey's perfect. Don't hide behind it, just say what you feel and speak-
If you perceive this to be hiding, no, this is about-
No, I'm not saying you, in general, but it's basically-
Well, this was my thing, so, so, as committee chair and as board president, this is what I thought was a good tool. Nobody's hiding behind anything from my standpoint.
That's all I'm saying.
So I'm happy to go on the record, and I think I know what I'm talking about, but I'd like to compare what I think I know with what the people that actually know, and then let's figure out a way to spend the taxpayers' money responsibly. And if this doesn't work, then you guys have tried other things. You know, the people that have been around, they, you know that you've tried other things. What I'm looking to do is try something a little different, in hopes that we could all work together on this. I know, I, I know it's gonna be a non-traditional, but I think it could work. Mr. Shi.
It's all well said, okay? By the end of the day, it's how much it's gonna cost you. Right? How much is it gonna cost you to build all of this? We know that the school needs to be updated, a lot of area needs to be updated, how much is it gonna cost? Right? How are you gonna finance it? And how do you prioritize? That's the key, right? You know, yeah, the, you know, you can have a bathroom that needs to be filled, the parking lot that needs to be filled. What is a priority for this board, for this year, right? We have four trailers in JP Stevens. Okay? We are cutting the labs from two to one, okay? And AP, again, I, I, AP courses, this, this is not a good question, I'm sorry. You should talk about other questions as well.
No, it's fine, that's fair.
It's not AP, it's other, like, you know, mechanics and stuff like that, right? The, the, the bottom line is, what is the board's priority? Is the parking lot, is the street, or is a classroom space, right? The classroom space, once you add it, you're gonna, you're gonna divide the tra, you're gonna take the traffic away from the current park, the hallways, you can reduce the traffic. So, again, you, we, we know we have so many problems, that's why we could not fix it with a limited budget. So I would love to see what is this board's priorities this year? What is number one priority? Let's fix the number one priority, let's look at some other little things that we can do.
So, so let me ask you this.
And this survey's not helping me, yeah.
Would this board be comfortable? Would this board be comfortable with me putting out a memo asking for that feedback? So this way, because if all we do is meet once a month and do this, it's not gonna work.
Well, we had a three-hour discussion, I told you the, the, what the financial things, what's impacted it is. I can repeat it over here, I, I don't have a problem with it, right? So, you know, I, I, I don't know how, how we're gonna get this one. I spoke to you honestly, what, how are we gonna finance this stuff, right? How are we gonna fix the other stuff in, in the, in the school district? Are we gonna willing to, are we gonna start talking about this? And what is our number one priority? Is our number priority classroom spaces, or we're talking hallways, we're talking about parking lots? Okay? Or we're talking traffic around the schools? When you're talking about traffic in the schools, you can solve it by getting more buses. Once you get a one bus, you can get fifty-two cars out of the street. Okay? This is other things that we can look into, but, again, what is the priority of the school district this year? Classroom or something else?
So I think it's fair to task Dr. Bragan with developing a short and long-term strategy based on the administration's perceived goals, right? Not perceived goals, your goals. This isn't all of us coming up with all of the solutions, we have to walk and chew gum at the same time, we need short-term fixes-
We gotta work with them.
And we need long-term.
Yes.
So I think it's, it's a fair ask to come up with some short and long-term proposals, just like we're looking at these paved, paved roads and our, and our, our roof projects, but parlay that conversation into actual infrastructure plans, and then we could have a discussion based on actual needs. And then this, this, this committee can then evaluate what the administration and the building principals feel like they need. Is that fair?
So-
Mr. Patel.
Yes, board president. Last year, we had the architect look at the JP Stevens and do the whole survey and everything, they came up with the renderings and drawings. Where do we stand with that at this moment? Since we are saying JP is our priority and JP, obviously, it is-
It's not a priority, yes, until the, the classroom, the board has to all decide on it.
That's what I'm saying, that's why I'm bringing up the point. If that is a priority and all the work has already been done, where do we stand on making sure that that goes and gets done faster? And not waste more time on saying if this is a priority or not? We all know that it's a priority.
Not, not as a, not as board president and not as committee chair, but as a board member that has one vote, just like you. My question to you would be, if we move forward with that project, how does that project affect? And the answer could be it doesn't. I'm giving, I'm, I'm not judging you, I'm saying, this is the question. If we move forward with that project, which the price tag was significant, how, how does that affect any other project that we want to get accomplished? Now, it seems to me that the board has different goals throughout the district, not just JP Stevens. So I think when the administration puts forward a proposal that's both short and long-term, I think that blend of goals should be paramount. I would expect to see something that addresses multiple buildings while significantly addressing the problems that that proposal identified at JP. That's what I'd like to see.
Okay.
I think, you know, we're, we're getting some things done in town, but I think that we, we have to really look at the big picture. My opinion, again.
Well, I, I agree with you, I, I agree with a hundred percent on that, right? And I, I shared my, with you on our private talk-
Yes.
About how we found these stuff. And the, when I share with you, that includes the other stuff, right? So, again, it's, it's a priority, and how are we gonna pay for it? And the other thing we have to keep reminding us, we can't continue to keep kicking the can down the road. So if you look at it, two years ago, when we talked about the, the construction costs, that was three hundred and eighty bucks per square foot. Right now, we're talking about four hundred and twenty dollars per square foot, okay? The interest rate right now is still low, right? If we're gonna go out, we, we definitely gonna go finance this, because we can't, we, we don't have enough cash to build it, right? And if we miss these, if we continue to kick the can down the road, if we miss this, we're gonna pay extra for no reason, right? You talk about feds, they're talking about increased interest rate, right? You, you know, the, the construction price has already been one of forty bucks already. So, again, let's get to what we need to do. This is already in March, we're into March now, the year goes by very, very fast, right? Let's get our acts together, get all the priorities, and stop talking about these, 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 whatever, you know, fantasy ideas, and let's get the hands out, hands dirty, and, and make the tough decision we need to make. That's what we are here for. Right now, we, as you mentioned, we built up a good foundation financially. Let's use the money wisely, let's see what the state is gonna give us moving forward. Let's plan that, and, and come up with, with, with a long-term plan.
I, I agree with you. And would you agree with my assertion that our administration be, should, our administration should be tasked with putting together this plan, and then we evaluate that? Do you agree?
Absolutely, I've been talking to Dr. Bragan since day one.
You have a lot of homework to do, Dr. Bragan.
It's okay. Yeah.
Any other comments from the board?
But we, we, we need, the board need to give Dr. Bragan, I, I don't know, do we need to give Dr. Bragan a priority? What do we think is the priority, or we just go by what, what he thinks?
I would, I, I would invite this, this board, this committee, to email Dr. Bragan a list of priorities.
Is that, but the survey is gonna help or not?
Well, the survey apparently isn't the best way to do it, so why don't we just do it the traditional way and email it to him?
The survey is very vague, right?
And I think it's a fair thing, if you wanna weigh in, and I think an expectation should be some short-term goals. And, you know, I would argue a thirty-year plan where we're, where we have money and budget planned, you don't have to get real granular with it. But there's obviously things like, you know, our beautiful James Monroe Building probably doesn't have to be renovated as soon as Washington School. So let's be a little deliberate with our thought process, and not everyone has to weigh in at a real granular level. However, we're all going to weigh in on what Dr. Bragan comes up with, with his team. I think that that's fair.
Well, that's fine. With Dr. Bragan, we already spoke last year about some of the funding and stuff, he, he knows where, where we stand, so, you know. I hope we can just plug in the new numbers, and let's see where we are. Again, you know, just wanted to reiterate, nobody here is, is ignoring any of the schools. They just prioritize it.
Right.
And how are you gonna fund it? At the end of the day, it's, it's just, just this.
Good.
All of our schools need modernization.
Okay. Any, any other comments?
Yes, a quick question in regards to census facilities, and the cricket season is up. Lot of the cricket teams are actually asking about permitting. We have the process in place, and we just need to make sure that that process continues, because our fields are going to be utilized.
How is that a facility, do, do, are you requesting to invest money in it?
No, it's, it's already invested in it, so people are using our facilities, they're, the teams are looking for using our grounds, which is what they're asking for right now, the season's starting, so we need to make sure the permits are going out on time, so they could actually make their teams choose the fields that they wanna choose from.
My understanding of the, there's policy and regulation regarding facility use.
Right.
So, there's a facility use form on our website, it's downloadable, and my understanding is that anyone, doesn't matter what sport it is, you're mentioning cricket.
Right.
But soccer, basketball, cricket, there's organizations that rent.
Right, so the only reason why I was bringing it up is, there's some confusion out there, basically saying, are we using it? Are we going through the process with the Board of Ed? Are we going through the process of the township? This has been part of the Board of Ed from last year, and we're, we're allowing our facilities to be used, therefore, we should be actually letting them know that, hey, listen, the forms are on board, online, you can start going-
What do you mean that the Board of Ed did it? What does that mean?
So, this are facilities, right? We're, they're using our grounds, we're maintaining-
So they rent our grounds?
They rent our grounds, they're maintaining our grounds.
How much do they rent the grounds for?
Uh, I believe the permitting is about, what was it, a hundred, two hundred, three hundred bucks?
Fifty dollars a year.
Fifty dollars?
Plus the permitting cost, whatever the permits are.
So how much is the, the permits are one hundred dollars per event, right?
Yes.
So if-
Before, we weren't getting nothing, the township was actually collecting from that and not getting anything to the, the grounds here. So my point is, if we're there, if they're using our grounds, we're maintaining the grounds, and we're permits, or we're permitting it, and we're responsible for it, therefore, they should go through the process of coming here and doing it, if that's-
My under, my understanding is that it's a permit fee per event, I think it's one hundred dollars, and then classrooms are like thirty bucks or something per hour. And then you could rent the cafeteria, the auditorium, the gym, et cetera, and then-
It's not the facilities, I'm talking about the cricket grounds.
Well, that's the facility, it's the same as a soccer field.
Okay.
So like, if I go out with twenty people and play soccer, twenty-two people and play soccer, it's a hundred, a hundred bucks, so each of us throw in like four bucks.
You could increase that, I have no problem.
Well, no, no, that would be a vote from the board, it's not me, I don't increase anything.
My goal is that funding that comes in from that should go to the schools, bottom line. It shouldn't be like the township collects-
So that's a good-
And use it as their tool for poll atticking, right?
So how much came in last year from that?
About fifty teams, I think.
So it was fifty teams, and then they paid one hundred dollars per game, like the soccer guys paid?
No, not per game, they, they go with the, the rental fifty bucks.
It's per season.
Per season.
Mm-hmm, that's the same with the township.
Okay, so I think that, I, I, because it's a facilities meeting, I don't wanna go down this policy talk, but certainly, whatever you guys are describing doesn't seem like it's, reflects the policy that we have on record with the board.
So we should increase it, then if that's the case, that's fine, we can increase it. My goal is, if they're using our facilities, then we should continue to do the process that we have, that's all I'm saying.
I have two goals, that the, the, the cost should be following the, the policy. And number two, there, the, if, if there's a cost associated with it and insurance regulations-
Which is the case they do.
Then, as long as they have insurance and they, they pay a rental fee, I don't see any reason why they wouldn't be able to use, but that's not a cricket-specific thing, that's for any sport. So, Dr. Bragan, can we make sure that something goes out to the community that says a link or something to the facility rentals?
We, we could send a renewed link out tomorrow, it's already on there, the building use facility.
It's already there.
Yeah. We could send something out tomorrow.
Okay. Ms. Peng.
Yes, so this, this cricket field is, I'm glad you mentioned about policy. I know we have, what, the first policy meeting was canceled, and since then, we, this is what we want to talk about, the facility rent, facility rental, the signup procedure, who's gonna manage the fields? Because I think if the school is, has paid for the fields and has been maintaining the fields, the, the money that the clubs are paying should, should go to the school, should not go to the township. But obviously, there is a discrepancy as of who should be managing all these team sign up. So this is one of the reasons I want to have another policy meeting, and I did ask last week to request a meeting on Thursday. And I understand that you, again, without any communication, you said that you are gonna, Mohin and I are the only member who's on the policy meeting now, because since Carol left. So I think on Friday or sometime, you sent an email, appoint yourself to be the chair of the committee, and again, cancel the meeting. So my question is, when are we gonna have the meeting to really talk about this business that we need to deal with? And also, you guys have talked, can I finish?
Yeah.
You guys have been talking about communications, and you accuse Mohin, why didn't he call you? If he, he has any concerns. Again, when you cancel all these meetings, you have not called me or Mohin, who has been requesting this meeting, and talking about frustration.
Excuse me.
How frustrated would I be when we have, keep requesting a meeting and the meeting keep getting canceled?
So you, just to be clear, you wanna have a school-
Well, President, she has a floor.
Mr. Shi, I could take the floor back. I have, I have a question for you.
Let me take the floor back.
Ms. Peng. You would like to, you would, you would-
My question is, how do you call this working together? I hope it's not just talking, okay?
Is that a rhetorical question, or would you like me to answer it?
I'd like to answer. How would you keep canceling meetings without notifying any of the committee members and call this working together?
Okay. Your point is taken, I apologize for that. I just wanna, for, for the record, you would like to call a policy committee meeting to create new policy for adult cricket in our school district? Is that what you're proposing?
I'm proposing to, we have already have some policy on rental.
We, we, not, not cricket, we have policy on facility rental.
Yes.
And would you like to call a, so-
It's up to the committee to discuss, that's the reason, I'm not proposing anything yet.
Just so you know, the, our policy, which was adopted, God knows when, is that the school board president, that's me, and Dr. Bragan, the superintendent, guides the agenda for the policy committee meetings, that's a fact. So even if you wanted to meet, we still set that agenda. Now, this is not-
And Dr. Bragan also, the, for, for the first meeting, Dr. Bragan already sent out an agenda with the policy that he wants to discuss, which hasn't been done for, because two meeting has been canceled since then.
Not, and two meetings were not canceled. One, one meeting was canceled because we had an abrupt resignation. You proposed the second meeting, and you're, we're gonna have a, we're gonna have a meeting before the next board meeting. It wasn't, it wasn't canceled. So we're going to do it, but if you'd like to have a policy topic on that agenda for an adult cricket league, so you can talk about how much the adults are paying for our cricket fields? I don't see how that's even a policy topic. That's not, that's, I don't, we could talk about that, but that seems like a facility use part of our policies and regulation that was adopted a long time ago. And to be quite frank, I don't see a difference between cricket and every other sport. So I don't see-
It's not, but we, we can revise, you said the-
I, I focus, our policy should be focused on our children, our students, our faculty, staff, the, our consta, to, to, to talk about an adult recreational league, I don't, I just don't see-
Yeah, they're using the same field as our children are using.
Well, they should be paying one hundred dollars to use it, that's what the-
That's, again, who's, that's, we need to discuss the policy to decide that, we can't just change it.
No, the policy is there. What do you, you need to have a meeting?
The price is changing, right? So let's say, for example, you wanna change the price that we're charging them, and it's on the policy already, that's fifty dollars for this, and we wanna change it to a hundred dollars. You're gonna need to change that policy and when you have the facility use cost to it. So that's what she's talking about. Why not have the meeting, we have that discussion, should we increase the rates? Do we do that, well, how do we do that? That's all part of what you're gonna put into terms of how to use the facilities.
Your, your point is taken, if you want to propose a new facility use agreement that's specific to cricket, I'm surprised, but I don't, I'm very surprised you wanna do that, but if you wanna do that, I would suggest sending that policy to me as chairman, and we're gonna, you're gonna be in the meeting with me, and we could talk about that. But I don't see how adult cricket recreation seems to be something that we're so upset about. I mean, we're in a facility meeting at eight o'clock on a Monday, and we're talking about adult cricket.
It's not that, it's the fact that you canceled two meetings, and we're the only ones, I, we're the only ones in the policy.
This is not a policy, and by the way, on the policy committee, you have, obviously, the, you still need to put it to a vote. It's not, the policy committee doesn't guide the agenda, nor does it, you know, make the decision.
But we talked about this last time, right? When the majority of the committee request a meeting, the meeting should be held, and it's not happening.
Well, you don't-
It's called working together.
Okay. Very good. Motion to adjourn.
Well, no, I'm, I'm not done yet, so-
Mr. Shi.
So just to, to, to reiterate that, with all due respect, well, President, you know, you can say you and Dr. Bragan guide the policies, but-
I don't say, that's- I don't say, that's our policy, I don't say it.
Okay.
Go ahead.
But, but you know there are conflicts, you have conflicts, right? You have conflicts with your family member working the district. So, there are certain policies, you cannot be part of the discussions. So, you know, again, with all due respect, you, you cannot be guiding everything, every board policies that, that, you know, as we're moving forward. And, um, you know, so, yeah, I, I, you are, you are the board chair of the policy committee, which you appoint yourself. But our policy also said, last time it was read, Hope read it, if majority of the board members on that committee, when they request a meeting, the, the committee as a meeting should happen. That's what it is. Um, you, I, you are a board president, but you don't, you don't dictate everything, right? It, it's, we have to go by, you, you go by the policy, which you said, yeah, you can, you and, and Dr. Bragan guide the, the discussions, but it's also same policy says majority of the board members who wants to have the meeting, let me finish, the meeting should happen. Let's, let's just follow the policy as it is, okay? Let's not swing the policy left and right, we can, we can fit someone's needs. Let's just hold it at the same standard, that's what it is.
Okay. Point taken.
Let me just ask one more thing, just to confirm. You just said you and Dr. Bragan set the agenda for the committee meeting.
I did not say, that's, I'm repeating what the policy says.
Yeah, yeah, is that true?
Yes.
For committee meeting, not for the board meeting, for committee meeting...
For policy, the policy agenda, yes.
The committee meeting agenda has to be set by the, by Dr. Bragan or the board, board president?
I, I've not reviewed the, the policy on how the policy committee runs, cause I'm here for a facility committee meeting tonight. I can certainly review it and report back to the board.
Not only that, I mean, Ms. Peng, if I'm wrong, I'm fine, I'm wrong. I, my understanding of the policy is that I'm right. And I'm, but I'm okay admitting to the world that I'm wrong, but I believe that the board president and the superintendent are what guides these policy committee agendas. If I'm wrong, it's fine.
And the reason you're referring to that is because you're saying, you, if you don't want some, something on the agenda, then there's no way we can put that on the agenda to discuss.
Uh, no, the reason I'm saying it, well, because I...
What is the reason you're saying that, please?
I'm saying it because if you came to me and said, I would like to talk about adult cricket in private instead of out here, and we're gonna do an adult cricket recreation discount, it's not gonna be, I, I, I don't think that that's appropriate.
It has nothing to do with just cricket. And by the way, we already said this, have, we have...
You said cricket, I didn't say cricket.
That was example.
That's example for the facility rental.
Because they were asking for it right now.
Because they are almost starting the season and, uh, they are out of time.
Personally, what I would do, I would...
And this, this signup has been asked a month ago and has been, I understand that, as I understand, that you are the one who told Dr. Bragan to hold off on this. No signup yet, so no, but no team, no league has been able to sign up and they are not able to start the season on time. And by the way, this, this policy, that, this agenda, we already talked about this last meeting, last public meeting. I said we have issues, we have business to deal with, we have policies to discuss, including the facility, including the cricket, cricket fields, last meeting. So, you already knew about it, it's not like it's the first time you're hearing, hearing this.
Ms. Madiger.
So, just want to, uh, repeat a few lines from the email that Doug sent about the policy committee, the last two lines. It says that based on Ms. Peng's and Mr. Patel's request and concern about policy issues, I will immediately look to schedule a date and time of a meeting that works for the committee and for Dr. Bragan. This memo was dated February twenty-first and today is February twenty-eighth. Yesterday was twenty-seventh, twenty-sixth. Tomorrow, we have a performance, uh, committee, uh, meeting. So, I mean, I'm, I'm sure we can...
This is a second request.
Mr. Mohan Patel, I would really appreciate, I would really appreciate if you, if you don't interrupt when I'm talking, because I lose my chain of thought. Uh, so, it's on Dr. Bragan now, because that's what you said in the email, that Dr. Bragan, based on his availability, he's gonna send out a date and time for a meeting on policy committee. So, it wasn't canceled, the meeting wasn't scheduled.
Did you know that I already sent out email requesting a meeting last Thursday?
Yes, and, and, and I appointed myself facility...
Yeah, and after that, you appointed yourself as the chair and you basically said this, you need to send up a date.
And that's in our policy to do, do that, I could do that, right?
So, basically, effectively, the meeting is canceled, right?
Just to be clear on the record, I'm allowed to do what I did though, right?
Yes, yes, you're allowed. Yes, you're allowed.
Very good.
But also on the same policy is stated, if majority of the board members want the meeting to happen, the meeting should happen.
Well, two out of four is not a majority, but I understand what you mean.
But it is a permanent three member, member, okay? The, the, the third, the fourth member is, is a, is, is a floater.
Well, I look forward to our meeting, which will happen before March seventeenth, which is our next caucus meeting. Okay?
Okay, the, the, you, you mentioned about this, you know, this particular meeting and Shivi mentioned about this, uh, performance monitoring meeting tomorrow. So, so, uh, my question to, to you is, uh, board president, what is the rationale that that committee, the performance monitoring committee meeting information was sent out to the entire school district, which is, is only a minor, minority of the board members, they cannot make any decisions as a meeting, it's sent to the entire school district? While this committee, the committee of the whole, with every board member attending, talking about the facilities and stuff, that is not communicated to the, to the whole district, okay? And also, we have our regular meetings, this regular caucus meeting and the regular, uh, board meetings, the, the public meetings. Why those meetings are not sent out to the public? Is that because we try to help someone who want to run for, for reelection in November? So, it's, it's a FaceTime? Let's, you know...
My point, exactly.
The, the, this, I, I still have the floor?
I can say.
Okay, so, we need to look at what we need, you, you cannot have the, the different standard when it comes to these communications, right? Let, this meeting is more important, let me finish. This meeting is more important, the regular caucus meeting, the, the, the regular public meeting is more important. We make decisions on those meetings. If you want to communicate these meetings to everybody in the district, send those meetings out.
I disagree with you. Ms. Madiger, do you have anything to add?
Yeah, I'll just say, um, the, your answer is, um, in the memo that went out on, uh, on the description of various committees. And if you read that memo and what we're trying to do in that committee, that committee will be non-existent without the participation of people. So, what we're trying to do in that committee is, we're not making any decisions. We're giving a forum to people to come, um, come and speak, you know, talk about their concerns and just for the board to kind of hear them out. Because a lot of time, what happens is that whatever we are doing, we think we are doing a great job, but we, but people on the field, they are the ones who know what's working, what's not working. And so, this committee basically is trying to give a platform to all parents in Edison, um, you know, something to voice their concerns. And through that committee, um, the reason to, uh, send an email out is because you don't want to leave anybody out. I know that last year, one time the email went out and then, um, then it did not go out because Jerry, you did not want the email to go out. But is it fair that only parents on, um, social media platforms, only they get access to this committee and the ones who are not on the social media don't get access? So, in terms of the motivation, uh, for the committee, the motivation is basically parents' voices, students' voices. And so, if we have that committee and we don't send the message out, then who are we talking to? We're not talking to anybody, we're just sitting there like, because that's the idea behind that committee. Whereas this facilities committee, it's going to exist whether people come to this meeting or don't come to this meeting, because we are trying to kind of discuss amongst ourselves, trying to, uh, think what's the best, you know, way to move forward to solve the overcrowding. Some of us have no, have some knowledge, some of have, us have a lot of knowledge, some of us talk to people. However, this, this committee will exist. This, decisions will take place, conversations will take place, whether people attend or not. We don't have a single person here except one, uh, today in the audience, okay?
Because there's no email sent out.
And, and so, so for the board meetings, email goes out, right? People know that there are board meetings.
Nope.
So, the thing is...
We, excuse me, we don't put out emails for board meetings or, or caucus meetings, action meetings. This meeting was identically advertised as board and caucus meetings.
Board president?
There's no difference, I just want to make that point before you continue.
Yeah, so...
We're on a timeline here, so please, everybody wrap it up.
Yeah, so, so, so that's, so that's all I want to say, that the reason is giving parents and students a platform and if we don't send the message out, how do they even know that we are meeting?
Board president?
Briefly, please.
Sure. In that email, can you tell me who are the members that you list on that email that you sent out in regards to the parents in terms of that meeting?
I, I'm the one, I, I approved the email.
Correct.
And if you're...
My question is, who was listed on that email?
The committee members.
Okay. Do you not agree that that basically sets a tone where, okay, these are the four people that are responsible for all of you?
Yes, I, yes, of course.
And is it not possible that that could be utilized as a political tool for an advantage for someone that's running for Board of Education? And is that not fair for anybody else? Cause you're using the school platform for a political movement for a certain particular person. And I, I'm sorry, I, I like to say what I feel and think is right and wrong, that is wrong.
Okay, Mr. Patel, I agree with you that it could be perceived that way, only now, because I don't look at life through the lens of politics and I apologize for not doing that. I'm the one that approved that email. I approved the email, I did it. Okay?
Mr. President, just so you know, last time and people are waiting to do public comment.
Okay.
Just so you know.
Okay. I'm gonna move to public comment. Any public comment?
Cristo.
Cristo, if he's not here.
No, he's waiting, he's been waiting.
He said he's waiting, I know he's waiting.
Mr. Cristo, public comment, I'm gonna give you your six minutes.
You gotta read your, you gotta read your sin.
Yeah, why, why would you give me my six minutes, Doug? It could give, it's to everybody. Are you saying that you're giving me special treatment for giving me the time afforded to everybody?
All speakers are requested to express themselves in a civil manner with due respect for the dignity and privacy of others whose legal rights may be affected. Please note, while it is not the board's intention to stifle comment on matters of legitimate concern to the school community, the public should be aware that if their statements violate the rights of others under the law governing defamation or invasion of privacy, they may face personal liability to the injured party. If speakers are uncertain of the legal ramifications of their comments, the board urges them to seek guidance beforehand from their own legal advisor. Thank you. Mr. Macropolis, you have six minutes.
Am I recognized?
You have six minutes, I have your clock. We don't have a public clock, go ahead.
Did my clock start?
Your, your, your clock is starting right now. I'll give you the warning, one minute warning.
I don't need a warning.
Okay.
As for the rights of others, I, I Googled that it was something about, um, wiretapping and I've actually, um, I have been threatened many times, people from your, uh, campaign, Doug. I was threatened with federal charges, um, for wiretapping from Tony D. Pascal, phony Tony D. I was threatened by Manesh Patel, somebody who donated to your campaign numerous times. Um, Boral Patel, did you like that ethics complaint that completely stuck? I'm waiting in the twenty days. Now, you have to answer for your corruption. Um, you can't just walk around with a smile. By law, you have to actually answer that now. Doug, you talk about Jerry Shi's interpretations. I'd like to take a moment. People can interpret something any way they want, let's, but one thing they can't interpret is the law. And you continuously come to every meeting and misinterpret the law for your own agenda, violating people's civil rights, very disgusting. You're a fanatical ideologist. That's the only reason you got the votes to be up there, because the party knew you would do whatever they ask you to do. Uh, the day of George Orwell is back nineteen eighty-four, Doug Schneider is the poster boy of that. I'm the only taxpayer here, why would you remove my rebuttals? You'll allow other people from your campaign to have rebuttals, but the, the serious residents that've been coming out here, you take away our time? Shame on you, Doug. You break Robert's rules of order and interrupt the speaker when they have the floor, you're constantly interrupting Shannon. Um, I don't know if it's because you don't have respect for females, but whether it's a female member, a male member, she has the floor, you have to respect. You and Boral interrupting people throughout the meeting, what's going on? Um, absolutely disgusting, how much time do I have left?
Three minutes and forty-eight seconds.
So, you, here's something. In order for us to get a rebuttal, we're supposed to forfeit our original time. No, once you forfeit your time, you forfeit your time, you can't get it back. Even if an idiot thinks you can, you can't get it back. Yet, how come in Robert's rules of order, if I want to take my two minutes and transfer it to him, you won't even allow that? So, why would you allow somebody to forfeit their time and then come back later? That's how, no, if you get six minutes, that means you get your full six minutes to speak. And when you're done with your full six minutes, if you give rebuttals, then I can come back and have half that time the next time. It's been going on since even before you came. Doug, I'd like to ask you something. Um, you never came to these meetings until you put your name on the ballot. Um, I've been coming to these meetings since twenty nineteen, so you can imagine in my shoes how I feel when somebody comes here out of nowhere, completely violating my civil rights. For what?